Good evening. I would like to call the order of the Kaiser City Council in regular session. It's Monday, November 20th, 2017, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Counselor Ryan?
Here.
Counselor Freeman?
Here.
Counselor Reed?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Counselor President Parsons?
Here.
Counselor Herrera?
Here.
Counselor Anderson?
Here.
And Youth Counselor Hernandez.
Here.
Thank you very much. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic forward its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, I want to start off with a special order of business, and that is a proclamation for Small Business Saturday. So, thank goodness, the executive director of the Kaiser Chamber of Commerce is here. So after I read the proclamation, I'll have the opportunity to present it to her as a representative of the business community in the city of Kaiser. So we're glad to have you here with us tonight, Danielle. Whereas the city of Kaiser, Oregon recognizes and celebrates our small, our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States, and they represent 99.7 percent of all businesses with employees in the United States, and are responsible for 63 percent of net new jobs created over the last 20 years, and whereas, small businesses employ 48 percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas, more than 112 million consumers shopped at small businesses on Small Business Saturday in 2016, and 76 percent of consumers plan to go to one or more small businesses as part of their 2017 holiday shopping, and whereas, consumers aware of Small Business Saturday 2016 spend a total of $15.4 billion with independent merchants on Small Business Saturday, and on average, 33 percent of consumers' 2017 holiday shopping will be done at the small, independently-owned retailers and restaurants. So now, therefore, be it proclaimed by me, Mayor Kathy Clark of Kaiser, Oregon, with the concurrence of the Kaiser City Council assembled in regular session that Saturday, November 25th, 2017, is Small Business Saturday. We urge the residents of our community and communities across our country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. In witness whereof, I've hereby to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Kaiser, Oregon, to be affixed to this document this 20th day of November, 2017. Danielle?
All right. So just play it proudly at the chamber and call businesses, go get 'em. Okay. All right. Thank you.
I've already seen a lot of crowds at our small businesses. I think people got an early start. That takes us now to committee reports, and we have Kyle Duran with us tonight to give us an update on Planning Commission.
Good evening. I am here to give a report. Do I need to give my name?
Name and city of residence. Yes.
Kyle Duran, Kaiser, city of Kaiser.
Thank you.
On the Planning Commission, I'm here to give a report based on our meeting last week about the movie theater. About the public hearing on the Development Standards Alternative. And I'm just here to report that we moved to approve the staff recommendation on the alternative for the...
Design alternative.
Design alternative for the... Drawn a blank.
So was this the one that had to do with how we were going to take care of the site plan and moving into one building?
The landscaping.
No. No, this was...
Oh, landscaping.
Let me help you out here. So this, our design standards require that there be 50 percent glazing...
The windows.
...on the windows into a building, and it's kind of hard to have a movie theater with lots of windows in it. So the design alternative was through the use of landscape materials, and so the approval from the Planning Commission was for a significant increase in the size and the design of the landscape. So it's going to be more than just a couple of trees and some lovely little shrubs. There's going to be a number of larger caliper, larger-sized trees, and they're going to relate to the building, so there's going to be a lot of differentiation. So I don't believe that anybody will really notice that there's not a lot of glazing.
Yes. So with the Planning Commission, we agreed with Nate's recommendation based on the architect agreeing that they would be happy to meet with Nate and follow his direction on this.
And another interesting thing, they're proposing actually incorporating a mural as part of the facade of the building.
Really?
So that will go through the Public Art Commission, and they're going to propose... Their current proposal is for an image of a train, a steam locomotive, in keeping with Kaiser Station. So I think it has a lot of fun potential.
I agree. That is fabulous.
And that's all I had to say. Thanks, Nate.
Well, I want to express my appreciation to you and the commission. It's a lot of detail work, and I always appreciate the time you put into it.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Duran? All right. Thank you very much. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
That takes us now into public testimony. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for public hearing. We have no public hearings scheduled tonight, so tonight, we get to start off with Paula Giles from the Kaiser Community Library. It's good to see you.
Again, I'm Paula Giles, and I'm the president of the Kaiser Community Library Board, and I'm here tonight. You guys have been so wonderful in your support of our library. The community part of our library is what we're mostly concerned about, and because of your help with our lease especially, it's allowed us to do so much more activity-wise for our people in this area. We've gotten so many compliments about some of the things we've added, but the biggest thing we just did in October, of course, was our book sale. Your staff here in the building are wonderful. They go out of their way to help us and guide us and help. Believe me, the first time I did this, it was like leading the blind down the alley. I mean, I had no idea what I was doing, and they led me through it and helped me so much, and they continue to support and provide for us all the information we need. By allowing us to have our book sale here in this wonderful building, we were able to raise $1,950.
Wow.
And because of your support with our lease, we can take that money and we can do some things for our community. A couple of the things that we're doing is expanding our large print library section for our older folks. We've had a lot of people move into the area who have difficulty reading small print, so that has become a real important resource for a lot of folks. A lot of people who are, who don't get out much, they really depend on the library for that kind of input and entertainment for themselves. Television is fine, but reading you can really get into. Also, we continue to expand the activities and opportunities we have for children especially. Many, we have activities and reading groups for every age group available. We also provide activities during the holidays, like Halloween and Christmas and different things like that. But we also have lectures and authors that live in the area come and share their information with us, and that's important, and all of that is because you folks have been so helpful and supportive of us. When we did it this year, we did it in the rooms opposite the lobby, which is different, but we got a lot of compliments about it because there was more space. It was better organized because we had more space. And the people who are here, the folks that were renting your other rooms, they came up and thanked us, actually, and I want to pass that on to your folks here at the building because they could have their staff meetings in the lobby, whereas before, when we were out there with our book sale, they had to go somewhere else on a corner, I suppose. I don't really know. But they were comfortable, they were happy, they came to us and said, "Oh, this has been so great." So it was kind of a win-win for everybody. The long and the short of it is, you have been so wonderful and supportive. One of the things that you helped us get started was a sponsorship program, and that has been wonderful. To this point, we've helped approximately 20 families who could not otherwise afford a library card to get a library card, and that's because of the suggestions and help from members of your group. So, I mean, in every which way, you've been so wonderful, and I just wanted to come personally and thank you on behalf of all of us at the library. We still are all volunteer, and we're always looking, so if any of you are interested, we'd love to have you onboard, but do come by and visit because we do have a lot to offer. Oh, one other thing, we've also expanded our English to Second Language section. We are getting both Russian and Spanish books, again, with some of the funds that come from things like our book sale, because we don't have to worry about the building itself, we can afford to do those kinds of things. So I, again, I'm going to say it one more time, thank you, thank you, thank you for all the help that you've given us. We really do appreciate it. Were there any questions that you might have?
Are there any questions for Paula? And I believe the sponsorship was Counselor Ryan's idea, did some fundraising for that, so very appreciative of the work that she did to make sure there's money for families to be able to get their memberships there. And I want to express my thanks to you, your board, and all of your volunteers, because literacy is the key to education and the future, and what you, the investment that we're making here is going to pay off dividends for years and years to come. So thank you for your dedication and making sure that we have first-class opportunities for people in our community to enjoy wonderful literature.
And you are right. Reading is the key to knowledge and travel throughout the world for our children, and they come in all the time so excited. And I didn't know whether I should mention anyone in particular because I don't want to embarrass anybody.
That's okay.
You help with the sponsorship program so much. We've had, we've actually had parents cry when they were so thrilled that their children could actually take home a book, because for them, that's a real treasure. And boy, oh, boy, they take full advantage of it. So, again, thank you all very, very much.
Well, we are thankful for you, and this is a week of Thanksgiving, so keep up the great work, and we look forward to hearing more in the spring with the Spring Book Sale that comes up, I believe, Iris Festival Weekend?
Yes. Iris Festival Weekend, that's, that Friday and Saturday, we are going to be here again, providing you'll allow us to do so.
No problem with that.
Thanks again.
Thank you, Paula.
And happy Thanksgiving to all of you.
Thank you.
And we have with us tonight Colleen Bush with the Board of Directors for the Salem Kaiser Transit. So glad to see you tonight, Colleen. Thanks for joining us. Going to talk to us about the update on the House Bill 2017 in regards to chariots.
Good evening. Happy November. Yes, I'm here, there's a couple of things going along with House Bill 2017 that chariots is part of, and one is a survey that is, it's out on the website, chariots.org. You can pick it up at the customer service desk or ride the bus and put it in the bus envelope there. What it's doing is asking, the Oregon Legislature recently passed a bill that secures increased future funding for chariots. We're preparing to enhance our services, and we want your feedback on what would work best for you. So we're considering adding service on Saturdays, Sundays, or weekday evenings, or a combination. Please help us and decide how we should prioritize service by ranking the three options. So you can take a paper survey, or you can take an online survey, and it's, needs to be done by Friday, November 24th. I only have two copies, but I'm sure if somebody wants to make copies, they can do that from there. And then, along with that, the Rulemaking Advisory Committee has been working on the details of House Bill 2017 as we, as this is going on at the same time. And there's another survey that the public can be participate in, and I'll read the letter here. Dear colleagues, Section 122 of House Bill 2017, Keep Oregon Moving, provides a new dedicated source of state funding to expand public transportation services in Oregon, known as the statewide transportation improvement fund, STIF. The legislation will fund four new programs with different eligibility requirements. The Oregon Department of Transportation is conducting a public process to develop administrative rules to guide implementation of the STIF funding programs. ODOT is accepting comments on draft general and formula rules. As rules advisory committee members, which I participated only in that I observed at the meeting on Tuesday and one earlier, there's another one in December, all comments are welcome on any section of the draft rules. ODOT also has a survey running from November 7th at the website, www.surveygizmo.com/ s3/3966574/stifdraftrules. The survey is the draft general and formula fund rules, including sections that use of statewide and transportation improvement fund, STIF formula planning requirements, advisory committee requirements, and qualified entities distribution of formula program monies. There's a lot of details to work out for the whole state, of which chariots will be benefited there. And on a side note, the Salem City Club on December, I don't remember the date, they're going to talk about the transportation fund, what's it, what's it mean for Oregon, and our general manager, Alan Pollak, will be speaking in regards to that. And when I can find the date, I'll wave it at you or something. It's in the next couple of weeks, first part of December, and I think that's it.
And if I remember correctly, you have the links to these surveys on your Facebook page?
Yes.
So your Facebook page is titled?
My personal one?
No, your chariots one.
I think it's just chariots. I just go to it. I don't remember what it says.
I think you shared it onto your director page as well.
I will do that.
So...
Yeah, I have shared all those on my director's pages.
So I'd encourage anybody, everybody, to go to Colleen's director page and follow on that. Colleen's really good about keeping us updated about what's going on, both locally and on the state level. This has been super helpful as we're navigating into new space with House Bill 2017, the transportation package. It's really going to provide some much-needed funds for all the modes. So I'm working with these funds and some of the recommendations through SCATS, Salem Kaiser Area Transportation Study, the MPO, and all of us are looking at the dollars coming in, how can we best utilize them to provide for all of the modes. So thank you for your hard work on this, really appreciate it. Are there any questions for Colleen Bush? And just so people know, we have two representatives from Kaiser on the Salem Kaiser Transit District. I was going Transportation Study again. Colleen Bush and Kathy Lincoln both represent Kaiser. All right. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Oh, Colleen Bush, I live in Kaiser.
And happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Mr. Christmas.
Hi.
Hi there. So Dave Wallery and Danielle Bethel are going to talk to us from the Kaiser Chamber of Commerce about the Holiday Lights Parade, and just so, counsel, so you know, we'll be going from this, unless there's somebody else who wants to address the counsel, into administrative action on the parades, on the parade. So take it away.
You're not going to do the talking?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm Danielle Bethel, the director of the Kaiser Chamber, and I'm a Kaiser resident. This is Dave Wallery, Wallery's Pizza of West Salem, and he is a Kaiser resident. And we are here to talk about the myriad of holiday events that the Kaiser Chamber partners with the city of Kaiser on each year, and it looks like the first one is our request to suspend the temporary, excuse me, temporary suspend the ordinance of the street vendor rule. And so, I guess, Nate, I don't know what I'm supposed to do other than say, "Will you please suspend that for a bit so we can have the parade?" And bring in street vendors along the way. Last year, I'm sure you may recall that we took the parade over. It had retired in 2015, and then, late in the year, I basically begged and pleaded with our board to take it on, and we put it together pretty quickly, and we wanted to incorporate some businesses on River Road so folks had more access to different vendors, not just the restaurants, maybe bring those restaurants outside or have different programs and clubs in the city really get involved. Last year, we had, I think, five, but I don't remember off the top of my head, vendors along River Road that did cocoa and tacos and different things. This year, we have heard from six different vendors. Well, Emmett Valley Bank, Yenney and Schofield is a new orthodontist here in town, McNary Fine Arts, Lake Point Community Church is going to host a cocoa booth at Remodeling by Classic Homes, which, in their new location on River Road. Franz Bakery of Portland is going to come down and serve grilled cheese bites at J.C.'s Pizzeria parking lot for the...
All free, too.
All, actually, all of this, for the most part, is free.
All free.
Except for the soup at McNary Fine Arts. And then, El Patron Mexican Grill is going to be outside doing Mexican cocoa and tacos and quesadillas. So we, it's just six, but we're starting to gain more traction. I think as the parade goes on year to year, we'll get more folks, more businesses involved. It's nice that actually all of those individuals are Kaiser businesses, and it just occurred to me, I left one off, sorry, Shannon. St. Edward's Catholic Church Latino youth program, as I'm looking at Chris, is going to be doing tamales in their parking lot. So I need to add that to this map that I did provide to all of you, and we haven't submitted it yet because we haven't gotten approval of lifting that temporary ordinance, but if we get permission, I'll go in the morning and fix it and then blast it out to the community through Facebook and on our website, and likely in the Kaiser Times if I can weasel my way in there for something. You're ignoring me.
I don't see him typing.
I know. I already gave him the map. I already, he goes, "Oh, okay." Anyway, so that's where I'm at with that.
Okay. So we have the map here, and the, says that the street will close at 6:00. The parade starts at?
7:00.
7:00. And there's going to be lights, there's going to be music, there's going to be all sorts of fun stuff. And last year, it was raining, 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 the parade started, and it was dry. It was just fantastic.
I foresee the same this year.
Just as long as it's dry during the parade, we're good.
So what's the makeup of the parade so far?
What's the what?
Makeup of the parade?
How many people do we have registered so far? As of today, 40. But I was just telling Dave a little bit ago, that's 10 more than we had last year at this time, and I'm pretty confident we'll get to at least where we were, which was 73 entrants last year. I was hoping for 80, but talking to different folks who always say we want to do the parade are feeling very pressed with the timeframe between Thanksgiving and then everything else we're doing this year during the holidays. And it's not just us. McNary, or, excuse me, Whittaker Middle School is taking their choir performance that they normally do in the spring, and they're putting it in the first week of December this year. So I know of at least six different participants from last year that have children in that performance, and so they're feeling like, "How am I going to build a float and do this?" So it's awesome all the way around, but challenging.
And what about bands?
So we have one more band than we did last year. We have five bands signed up so far, and I have confirmation that three more are considering it.
Cool.
From out of town. So so far, we have McNary, South, Sprague, and McKay has a marching band this year, which is awesome for them. And then, The Beat Goes On, which is a...
One-time-around band.
Yes, it used to be the one-time-around band.
Now they're called...
I don't know how to say it politically correct, but it's people who are older who still want to use their instruments, and they do a great job.
Those 60-year-olds, Shannon.
Thanks. I can't get away with saying that yet. Yeah, okay. And then we have three out-of-town bands, two from the northern area, past Woodburn, and then one little east of us that are interested, and I'm not going to throw them under the bus in case they say not this year, but...
Float?
Yep.
Not going to throw them under the float?
No.
Not yet?
Never. Trying to make it all exceptionally exciting. There's a lot of logistics in town that day as well. McNary High School is sponsoring a youth basketball tournament all day on the 9th. So we're, I've, you know, working with Sergeant Wedding and logistics of traffic and trying to get people who are foreign to Kaiser in and out of Kaiser. I think this year, for the parade overall, we've done a pretty good job of communicating in just about every source we possibly can, when the road shuts down and how you can and cannot navigate in and out of the city. You know, but people just have to really engage those resources, whether it's the paper, Facebook, the website. I have a radio ad just about every second, it feels like, on KYKN talking about it. So, you know, we're really trying to communicate to folks that this is in fact happening, and turns out, if you're not at the parade, you're going to be hindered by it. So just join us.
Don't fight it, join it.
Doing reader boards again this year? Okay, good.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right. Well, The Beat Will Go On, and looking forward to the parade this year, and thank you to you and the elf crew and...
We had a great crew this year.
Yes.
More than we needed.
We're getting in the holiday swing a little early because they, not only with the parade coming up, but all of the Christmas lights went up this weekend.
Tree lighting ceremony's coming up, so we'd like to invite you officially to have you all come out and help us light this tree, and Madam Mayor, we have a special job for you, too.
All right. I will do as directed, make sure we get the holidays started right.
We're putting you on the spot.
Put the star on.
Yeah. Oh, that would be a lot of fun.
Like Tinker Bell. We can make that happen.
Yeah. Yeah, me and Heights, just ask about that one. That'd be a lot of fun.
That's Tuesday, the 5th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Six?
No, it's the 5th, at 6:00.
At 6:00, yeah.
You all received an email in your inbox, if your server's accepting emails from me today, that has all the information provided.
Perfect. I think they got that fixed.
I think that's it.
No?
No, we're not done?
No, we still have to do that.
Oh, we still got more stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, but wait, there's more.
Yeah.
Okay.
So then the next one is us asking, I don't really even know what the words on this paper mean, so I'm here ultimately to say, "Will you waive the fees for the permits for the parade and the Christmas tree lighting and the jingle-dash?" Right? I think that's the three that we asked for. Elegant, neat. Well, I have the applications here, and we had talked about this at Budget Committee earlier this year, but then normally, we just come here now, so here I am now.
So in the staff report, we have the breakdown of the fees and so forth, and also, if I remember correctly from the budget, I could go back to my page and look, but we will discuss this under this item here in a few minutes on each of the three of those.
Okay.
And I'm glad you're here to answer any questions if we have them when we're working through the process.
Okay.
So if you can stick around, we'll be able to ask questions. So are we good with that? Then why don't we go ahead, and do you have anything else, or we'll go into administrative action? One more.
I have nothing else.
You're good?
You have anything else? What'd I forget?
I'd just like to go on the record and say that Yenney and Schofield, the new orthodontics in town, stepped up right away, and they're sponsoring the Christmas tree lighting this year.
Really?
And they want to be very involved in Kaiser, so if you know them, thank them. I'm very grateful to any business that wants to step up and sponsor, but particularly new ones that come in and just want to swoop away and really get involved. It's pretty great.
Well, they're in wonderful location. We know a business that used to be there that was also very involved, Big Town Hero.
Right.
So they're in that same location, and they have a front row seat for the parade.
Perfect seat.
It is.
Perfect seat.
Well, we appreciate they're willing to become very involved in the community. That's how we roll in Kaiser, is we work together and make things happen. All right?
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate all of the work. We're looking forward to a very happy holiday season. Is there anyone else who would like to address the city council during public testimony before we move on to administrative action? Yes. Oh, you found the date?
The date, yes.
Okay.
So this is an addendum. The Salem City Club will feature Alan Pollak speaking on the transportation package December 1st.
December 1st.
Yep. And that's a noon meeting at the Heritage Mall Mission Mill.
Okay. And that's at Mission Mill?
Yep.
Okay. Fantastic. All right. Thank you so much. That takes us then to administrative action. Item 8A was to the resolution authorizing a temporary suspension of the ordinance prohibiting street vendors, city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'm going to Shannon.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Council. As Danielle and Dave indicated, the Holiday Lights Parade is coming up again and there's three connected items for your consideration in the packet. The first is the suspension of the street vendor ordinance. We've typically done that for years for the Iris Festival and the last few years for the Holiday Lights Parade. So that, there's a resolution in there to do that. And it prohibits any interference with pedestrian, vehicular, or parade traffic to allow for street vendors. The second is basically allowing permitted temporary uses in connection with the parade. And this is the one that Danielle was talking about, about food vendors. Basically, what this would do is allow a blanket of six, now seven. And, and the way I would suggest doing that, if I could switch to that, Madam Mayor, in the packet, is the second resolution has what I call the cover resolution and then the exhibit. And in the exhibit, it says, "Council approves, subject to the following hour, you know, hours and conditions as set forth." And number two says, "The following locations," and has a list there. What I would propose instead is on the second line to change that to read, "The following locations as shown on the attached map." Cross off those descriptions and, and indicate by amendment that we're adding St. Edward's. So the, the map, we'll get a revised map from Danielle. We'll, we'll just cross those off in the, in the text of it and just say, "As shown on the attached map." And that attached map will be like you see there, except with the addition of the St. Edward's location.
And that was in the staff report, the St. Edward's, it was?
Yes, that was in the staff report, it just didn't get reappeared in the map. I think Counselor Ryan had a question.
Uh, Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Regarding that, that statement, I'm just wondering if, does it need to be specific in, in adding, for example, the, the seventh one? Because what happens if they get, they're able to get new additional people that want to support the parade between now and then? We don't want to come back, can we, obviously, can we just kind of blanket? Blanket that?
Well, I, and I don't know if Nate has a comment. Nate and I have discussed that. The issue becomes one that it's, I think, less than two weeks away. And any, and I don't know if there'd be any difficulty with it, but we, we felt that the council should approve kind of the general location and the number. Each of those is a $50, $55, $50 or $55 fee that the council would be waiving. And then in addition, you know, we kind of have some concerns about any swapping at the last minute. But that's up to council. I don't know if Nate, do you have anything to add to that?
The only concern that we have is what happens if somebody shows up and they're not working with the chamber and they haven't talked to us? They don't know what the conditions are that they have to approve. So at some point, somebody needs to talk to us, that's all.
Yeah.
Now, whether, whether you want to give the, the chamber some additional latitude, I would, the staff report suggests that they could establish some additional sites. And as long as they're working through the chamber, I, I'm not sure I would have a problem with that. But somebody, I mean, I don't want mayhem and pandemonium out there around the people.
So, and, and I'm not certain, if I may, Madam Mayor, Danielle, do you anticipate any additional? You haven't heard any discussion of additional or?
I don't know that there's going to be anybody additional, but we're constantly recruiting and everything happens in Kaiser in two weeks.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the reality, is people go, "Oh, I can actually do this." And so...
And the, the very worst that would happen if you adopted as ways proposed is any additional would have to come in and pay the $50, $50 fee. So I don't want any mistakes. I mean, anybody can do, apply, it's private property. So there could be somebody that comes in that doesn't work through the chamber and apply also. Or somebody could come to the chamber and say, "Gee, I'm sorry I didn't get to you sooner." And they could come in on their own and, and apply. So that's really the only issue.
My goal was just not to tie their hands with hope that we can get more involvement and on the, on the map, so...
Right. And, and so as long, as long as council gives some sort of authorization to the chamber and they, then the chamber assumes that responsibility to make sure they're not blocking aisles and, and creating transportation issues and that sort of thing. I think that could be very workable for the council. I just want it clear that council, chamber can't block somebody that doesn't want to work with the chamber. They still have access to come in, get their own permit. But if they want to work through the chamber, I would think that would be something easily accomplished. So, and I, I think the staff report indicates up to three additional sites.
The, the staff report indicated 1, 2, 3, 4, plus up to three additional sites because at packet deadline, we hadn't nailed them down. So that would have been a total of seven, which is what the total is now. So it's up to council. If, if you feel like you want to allow more wiggle room above the number of seven or, or shifting the location, we can certainly write that in.
And again, it's, it's such a discreet time period. You know, we're not, we're not talking about establishing a food cart for 16 weeks or something or even two days. It's really during the, during the event. So I would think that council could easily give authority to the chamber to locate. If somebody came and they wanted to work with the chamber, that would be fine. Somebody that wanted to work independently would have to come to us. That's my only concern.
That works. Okay.
And if, so if I may, Madam Mayor, the, the second item, as I indicated, was a temporary, temporary uses, which is the second resolution there and the issue with the map. And then the, the third one is the issue of the fees. And the fee waiver was discussed at the budget meeting, but Budget Committee indicated that was up to council. The costs for the police and public work staffing and barricades have been budgeted. So, you know, that's up to, up to council on, on the waiver of that fee. So in, in kind of reiterating that, we have three issues. One, the suspension of the ordinance for street vendors. Two, the temporary uses subject to conditions for the Holiday Light Parade. And that, that is the one that Counselor Ryan spoke to. You'd want to say, "As amended with regard to the addition of St. Edward's in the map or any other changes that council may want to make to that." And then thirdly, a minute motion with regard to the fees. And you can see, I won't go through the dollar amounts there, but you can see the, the estimated fees there. And, and so the, the motion would be if the council wants to waive all or part or none of those.
Okay. Any questions on the staff report? Counselor Ryan?
Are you going to divide it then?
We're going to take this in, in bites. We're not going to try to do the elephant all on one. Mr. Brown?
So perhaps Danielle could speak to, well, I'll speak since she's sitting down. I heard at the Government Affairs Meeting that the intent was not to limit people working with the chamber just to chamber members that want to locate these things, the food carts. Okay?
They don't have to, they don't have to be chamber members in order to participate? That is, yeah.
That's what I heard. That you do not have to be a chamber member.
So there's no charge for them to participate on top of, aside from or in addition to the temporary use permit?
Right.
Okay. So that's all we're dealing with here.
So it truly is a community-oriented event. It, it is something that the chamber is, is going through the, all the work to establish it and to organize it. And it is open truly to all community members. And I think they're making a very good faith effort to make sure that it is open and it's not a membership-only kind of thing, but it's a community, a community involvement effort.
Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just, as I'm looking at these estimates and so forth, basically what I'm seeing is about $615 that have not been budgeted. So this would be waivers, 615 roughly that we hadn't counted on. I guess my question's for Mr. Wood here. Where would that money come from and can we afford it?
At, at this point, we do have available working capital to cover the costs that we haven't budgeted for already.
So if I, and just to reiterate, the things that were already budgeted through the budget process were the police staffing, the public works barricades, and the public work staffing. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, those three were already accounted for and approved by the Budget Committee.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Counsel President Parsons, you want to put a motion on the table for the first item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017, authorizing a temporary suspension of the ordinance prohibiting street vendors.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017, authorizing a temporary suspension of the ordinance prohibiting street vendors. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Item 8B is the, oh, sorry, the second part of this one, is the resolution authorizing temporary uses subject to conditions for Kaiser Holiday Light Parade, 2017. Do you want to go ahead and put a motion on the table?
Let's just go with it.
Okay. Yeah, so, and then with the changes...
As shown on the attached map? Is that where we put?
Well, if, just to reiterate for council, the, the motion could be "as amended." Amended meaning change the reference to, instead of the, the attachments in there, instead of the list, just as shown in the attached map. And the attached map would be identical to the one that was handed out, except with the addition of St. Edward's. So you don't, you don't need to say all that for the motion. If you agree with the way that's reiterated, it's, it's "as amended." And, and just for council's sake, with the resolution, we tend to, we can be a little bit looser on the exact language depending on the issue with an ordinance, we cannot. So I just want you to understand that for future reference. So the indication again was, I have, I'll write one here. Is to change Paragraph 2 in Exhibit A to read, "The 2017 Kaiser Holiday Light Parade may have one booth/stand located in the following, in the, excuse me, in the locations as shown on the attached map on a parking lot or other hard surface area." And then cross off that list, attach the map with the addition of the St. Edward's. Are there any, any questions on that amendment?
No, just stay as amended.
The, the question was, Counselor Ryan?
Maybe a friendly amendment to, with that amendment, to include if there are more vendors that would be inclusive and that may be up to 10 or if you want to put a number on it or, so that they're not limited at seven. If people come in late and that still could be a supportive.
Just so long as they work with the chamber.
Sure, absolutely.
And, and so that would be an amendment to say, "Up to a three additional."
Right. Because right now it says up to...
That's okay?
Three other locations, we can say up to six other locations, referencing Exhibit A.
It'd actually be up to three additional. There's already seven.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Yeah, I believe the indication was three, up to 10, so it'd be a three additional?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. So for a total of 10?
Up to 10.
Yeah.
In case it stays at seven, we're, it's still the same.
Right. Yeah, it'd be as amended, understanding that the, of the total is not seven, but 10.
And was there a motion in a second?
No, we haven't done a motion in a second. She's still working on the language.
One more question, Tim. I'm sorry, where did you say that money would come from again?
The funds would come from existing working capital. In all of our funds, we came out a little bit ahead over what we anticipated last year.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, I'm ready.
Okay, go.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017, authorizing the temporary uses subject to conditions for Kaiser Holiday Light Parade, as amended, understanding that it could not be seven, but up to 10 vendors. And we pay all fees.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017, authorizing the temporary, temporary uses subject to conditions for Kaiser Holiday Lights Parade, 2017, as amended to, to, up to 10 for the locations and that all fees waived?
All fees waived.
And all fees waived. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you. When you say all fees, you're referring to the temporary use permit fees, correctly?
Yes.
Correct, you're not going into the?
No.
That's a separate, okay, thank you.
No, no, all fees waived are all these fees right here, all of them.
Madam?
Well, we're on, I thought we're doing it, we're doing it three separate, I thought.
Are we splitting, we have to split that one out, don't we?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the, the staff report indicates the resolution stands separate from the fee waiver, which is just a minute motion.
Okay.
Okay, so we're not discussing the fees at this time.
We're not discussing the fee then.
Okay. So the resolution is for the temporary use subject to conditions and we're raising the number to 10?
That's correct.
For the vendors to work with the chamber, understanding that if vendors or businesses on River Road want to have things going on, that they can do so as part of their own business. Okay. Any further discussion on this one? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Now we can deal with the fees and that would be a minute motion. Counsel President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council waive all fees for the Kaiser Holiday Lights Parade.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council waive all fees for the Holiday Lights Parade. Discussion. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I struggle with this a little bit and we've had this discussion before. I, I guess I want to maybe look at making a friendly amendment. One, I think it supports Kaiser and it's, it is all about Kaiser and I love what it does. But I'm concerned with the fact that we increased the fees for police to our residents and, and because I feel like we need to be good stewards of that money, I'm, I would like to propose that, and it's, I guess, because it's sponsored, because it's, it is not a nonprofit, it's, it's for-profit, that we remove the police staffing at 4,400 to, to cover all of the fees at 2,565, with the exception of the police. And again, that's only because we are increasing our residents and I feel like it's fiscally responsible, so...
So that's a friendly amendment? Does, does the mover accept it?
No.
Okay, did you want to make that a separate motion?
No.
Okay.
I just like it on the record, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
And just, just to note that the police staffing amount was budgeted by the Budget Committee at the council back in May. So this, right. The police staffing, the public work staffing and the public works barricade. So the change we're making tonight is regarding the application fee of $50, the temporary use permits. It says seven at $55 each and this could be up to 10 at $55 each. And then the Kaiser 23 coverage and that would come out of the PEG funds, the Public Educational Government Television Fund, which is a separate from the general fund. And Tim's nodding, so I got that one right. And that's at $180, $4, 4 hours at $45 per hour. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. I love a parade. Let's do it. All right. That takes us now to the consent calendar. Counsel President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two items on the consent calendar. Item A is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Oregon for vending services. And B is the approval of the November 6, 2017 regular session minutes.
Do we have any polls? Counsel President Parsons?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second?
The consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Reports. So Counselor Ryan, shall we start with you tonight?
Sure. I'm short and sweet tonight. I have, have had a busy couple of weeks, but it's, let's see, let's start with, I was one of, I think with Bruce, we gave the presentation to Eagle Charter School for Who's the Boss? And it reminds me of when my boys were little because they were crazy little critters. They were all over the place. We had fun though, I think we had fun.
Before you go on, I don't, I want everybody to see, this is a card that the students sent to thank Counselor Anderson and Counselor Ryan for doing this. I don't know if you can get, there we go. And each of the little petals on here has the name of a student. So this was in the council office, so thank you both for doing this. The students really had a great time.
It was a lot of fun, it was my privilege. Secondly, our United Way meeting got canceled today and it's on now, our next meeting won't be till January, be till January, so I won't have a report on that. But I know we're still working on trying to get a fundraising mechanism for the kids with pure court. And then I filled in for Council Herrera for the Parks Commission, and was thoroughly entertained and happy to support the parks, so. And that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you very much. Council Freeman?
Let's see, Council Reed and I attended the Marion County Recycling Tour. It was very interesting. It happened to be a very cold night, standing outside, so, I don't know, pick a warmer night to do that tour, I guess.
Probably though.
Yeah, probably. Yeah. But it was interesting, we got a nice little goody bag, and they fed everyone dinner. I did attend the Planning Commission for President Parsons, and Kyle, you didn't mention this, but it was probably the shortest meeting of a long time for the Planning Commission. It was 50 minutes, so I'll cover those anytime they're 50 minutes, right? And then we had the Traffic, Bike Ways, Pedestrian Safety Committee. They are very active. They've got some bike routes on the website, and they're routes for all ages. They're doing walking routes as well. Wayne Frye's really been working with Safe Routes to School and Google Maps. Dennis Dunning was one of the committee members, and his term is done, and so we thank him, and he was talking about all his traveling that he's going to be doing, so the rest of the committee was very envious. And we do have between 70 and 90 helmets available, so these do have to be fitted by a volunteer, and there are several committee members on the traffic safety that will fit the helmets, and Deputy Chief Coons, if, please let the officers know that there are helmets if you guys need them, and several of them will come to the police station, or even they'll make a house call if needed, but, so we have helmets there. Are you going to report on the grants that Officer Winning's been, no? Okay. So I'll share that, that, I didn't want to steal it if you were, but also Officer Winning reported that, that we have, we're successful with our DUI grant, a speed grant, and a seatbelt grant, and he has applied for all three of those again, and feels pretty confident that we'll get those again, so that's great. We talked earlier about the tree lighting on the 5th, and the parade on the 9th. There will be no traffic meeting in December, and no West Kaiser Neighborhood Association meeting in December. I attended the Personnel Policy Committee meeting, and I want to thank Council Reed for covering the volunteer coordinating committee for me. And we still have a couple openings, which I know will be posted and closing-
The first of December.
First of December, okay. And so we do have one opening on the Parks Board, one for the points of interest, one on traffic safety, bikeways, pedestrian, and one on stormwater. So I know it was a big meeting last week, and so, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Councilor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was fascinated by the Waste Management Tour. It's, it's always amazing to me what goes on behind the scenes, stuff that we don't have to think about, they do very well, and it's a very well-organized establishment, and a big thank you to them for all that they do. I attended the Kaiser Community Band Veterans Concert, and that was full of all kinds of wonderful patriotic music. It was, it was really an excellent experience, and so we have a lot of those guys and gals taking, putting a lot of work in that, and it was a lot of fun. Also went to go see both Wizard of Oz, which was at McNary, and Heaven Can Wait, which was Kaiser Homegrown Theater, both fantastic productions, and again, a lot of hard work, a lot of talent. We have such a wonderful community that way. There was a bond community, sorry, a bond community listening forum at McNary High School last Monday, and Council Herrera and I were there, and I was really impressed with the turnout. Apparently in the district, that's been the highest turnout of any feeder system, so we really appreciate our Kaiser residents who went there to, to get educated about this bond that is coming up on the May ballot. So it's important to be able to know what is involved with that, and to educate yourself on that. And there is a link on the Salem-Kaiser webpage to find out more about that, and what, what that has to offer. Volunteer Committee was lots of fun, lots of, again, very dedicated people. We had a Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association meeting last Friday, and there is going to be a meeting change on that. We are going to be meeting the first Thursday of every month now, and that will start January 4th. There will be no December meeting for that, so, again, hopefully, we're hoping with that meeting change that we can get a lot more people out, that it will be more success, or it will be more of a draw, and it will be here at the Civic Center. And those will be at 6:30. So invite all our Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood folks to attend that. Also, we've got one more day of student, teacher conferences, so please come to that. They're, they're lots of fun for, for most parents. And again, a really excellent way to support the community in terms of the school, so that's all I got.
All right, thank you very much. On the note of Heaven Can Wait, I'd like to congratulate former Mayor Dennis Koho on his acting in that production, and looked like he had a lot of fun. Council President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Marion County Commissioners Breakfast on the 9th with Councillors Ryan and Freeman. That's always an interesting conversation, and learning about what's going on outside of Kaiser and the county. They're always interested in what we do here in Kaiser, and they love the roundabout, by the way.
Especially Britannia.
Yes, especially San Britannia, that's correct. And then I attended the Personal Policy Meeting last Thursday. Also on Saturday, McNary had a, the Booster had a fair, a craft fair, and it was like so packed full of people and vendors, it was pretty amazing. I bought quite a bit of stuff. I seem to always spend a lot of money at those things, but I had a great time, so it was a great job by whomever did that for the Boosters. Coming up-
Dennis has got a big smile.
She has a big smile.
I have a great group of gals.
Teamwork.
Teamwork, teamwork. And coming up, Thanksgiving, and some time off, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council Herrera?
Thank you. We, so you go back to Veterans Day, I had the honor of taking a young veteran to dinner, a personal friend of mine, and we had a visit with four other elderly gentlemen from World War II that are still around in Woodburn. On November 13th, we had the, and I want to thank Council Ryan for filling in for me. I was, didn't work out, but I'm glad I, I did go to the, let me, let me, let's see if I get this right, Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Commission, and now the Criminal Justice Advisory Council. We kind of have dual role now, where we toured McLaren. And it was very interesting for me, because my father actually worked there in 1968, and I had to go back, and it was weird, because I, when they introduced me, I said I was here in 1968. Of course, they all misinterpreted that. But we used to go to the movies, they had a swimming pool there, and, and it was kind of cool, going back to when I was in sixth grade, going, you know, going to there as a family. It was really cool. But that was incredible tour, and by, if you ever, if you ever get an opportunity to take that tour, it is amazing to see the coordination there. And I want to thank Superintendent Dan Berger, who I've known since high school, and Lord High School President, that's the name of the high school at McLaren, Michael Kahn, I think, used to work for school district, well-known, very incredible tour, and we appreciate that. Our Cal Club in Kennedy is underway, and we are really excited about our volunteers. We have volunteers from McNary, Corner Community, Cornerstone Church, I believe, and, and just other members of the community. And I, I'm really impressed with the dedication of our high school kids. It's just amazing, and I keep telling them that. Also, let's see, yeah, Community Dinner at, at my church, St. Edwards, this Wednesday, so everybody's invited. And if you've never been to, just go down there, they always, everybody's really friendly, and you just meet people, and you usually, you'll see somebody you know, I guarantee you, I always do. And on December, let's see, what's the last, oh yeah, the last thing I wanted to do is give you some kudos to Officer Coons over here? Because whenever I need information, and I go to Coons, he does a wonderful job of getting back and letting us know what's going on, keeping, keeping us in tune, and I, I really appreciate that, young man. So, we go back a long ways, our little league days, back, I tell people 40 pounds ago. Thank you.
Roland, Roland, Council Herrera, go Beavers.
I get a whiff of Civil War going on here. Quick. Yeah, he came with the flags and everything, that's awesome. Council Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I begin, a question around the Community Dinner, and maybe Council Herrera can answer this. If we have anybody who might be interested in helping serve or something like that, is that something that's, you all have that taken care of, or would they show up, or?
I'll be honest with you, our, the Latter Day Saints Church, is that the correct way to say it? I think they usually do the book coming, and they have, I mean, it's amazing, they have volunteers waiting, and they have too many volunteers sometimes, and it's, it's great that you ask, because I always ask them. Not for my kids, of course, they help.
And then you share that.
And they're, they're really, they're really, you can always ask, but they really do a good job.
Yeah, they, they take turns, different organizations take turns.
They carry the book, I think I've done it four times this year, it's amazing, so.
I had a question from a member of my household about that.
Oh, that's good for you. Well, I'll, I'll see what I can-
My daughter, who's a senior at high school. All right, so a few things. First, I want to just extend my appreciation to Councilor Ryan for taking my place at the County Commissioner Breakfast Meeting on the 9th that I had to miss for another meeting I had to be at, so I appreciate that. Let's see, day before that, actually, November 8th, I was as the liaison to the Kaiser Chamber Board, I was at that meeting. And I just continue to just be so appreciative of the awesome work that the chamber, the board, and the other members of these, of the organization do, to really make things happen, and they've got things underway. We've already heard about all of the event planning that they've got underway, just for right now, not, not to mention Iris Festival and everything else like that, but, so that's really awesome, and it's making, really does, it lends so much to this community in so many ways. And so I'm, I'm also looking very much forward to tree lighting on December 5th at Wallery Plaza, 6:00 PM, so don't, make sure you're there. But just one other thing I want to do a shout out to, and that is the Kaiser Network of Women. No. How about them apples? They are, they are getting their giving baskets together, and so if folks want to help out on those, that's a really neat project that I really appreciate the folks at the chamber, business women and men, coming together to help provide for the needs of our community, for those that are less fortunate, and that need that help at this time of the year especially. Then of course, the 9th of December, we already heard, but just to reiterate, we've got the Jingle Dash Run-Walk that will precede the parade, and that's a 6:00 PM start on the, on the Run-Walk, start and finish at JC's Pizzeria, and then the Holiday Lights Parade, of course, at a 7:00 PM start. That'll be great. For more info on that, you can go to KaiserChamber.com for all the info on that. And, oh, and then the other thing, I just wanted to point out on that, back on no Kaiser Network of Women, you can go to their Facebook page for more information if you want to help out with that. And then finally, just the one thing that I've got to, because somebody brought up Civil War, and yes, I am a Beaver, so go Beavs, but, and that is, the, the thing that I would just highlight is the, the neat thing that our Boys and Girls Club for Marion Polk Counties and Salem does, that was last Thursday, Civil War Dinner Auction. I don't know how much money they raised, but it's always a cool thing, and, but always an awesome event, it was like over 600 people there, and I might point out that the McNary Band did play both fight songs, so there you go, Council Herrera. But in any event, a great event, and just, just an awesome, awesome organization, so anyway, happy Thanksgiving to all.
All right, thank you very much. Just a couple of things to add to so much going on in our community. I did go to the SEDCOR, which is Strategic Economic Development Corporation, presentation on the opioid epidemic. They had three panelists, physician, mental health services person, and the WDA, Paige Clarkson, who did a fantastic job discussing the complexities and the, the progress we're making in terms of opioids, coming together as a community and providing appropriate and effective care for people who are in crisis. So I was very appreciative of that. And we need to really stay well-informed and ahead of that. One of the outreaches that our police department did was the drug takeback, the prescription drug takeback. And anybody who didn't bring down prescription drugs they want out of the house, please bring them down to the Kaiser Police Station, any business day, Monday through Friday. We have a takeback station right here that's always available. So when you're done with prescriptions, get them out of the house, and keep them out of the hands of people who shouldn't or shouldn't have access to them. On the 14th, I attended the Heritage Foundation Board of Directors. We have another meeting coming up on the 12th of December. Lot of good things happening at the Heritage, with the Kaiser Heritage Christmas is coming up in December. We also have activities, as you heard, at the library. The Black, White, and Gray Show was still on over at the art gallery there. Phenomenal, phenomenal artwork. If you haven't been over there, please make a point of going over and seeing that art show, it is just incredible. 15th was the Personnel Policies Committee. Lots of great things happening with the recruitments for our police, and with the Parks employees, and some great work there, so some new folks get to join our wonderful staff here at the city. Coming up, we've got, there's a holiday event calendar on our website, thanks to the Festival Advisory Board, who had their roundtable, I believe it was in October, wasn't it, or September? So organizations, groups that were doing community events were invited once again to come, share what they're doing, so folks know who's doing what and when, so we could better coordinate. And we have put a calendar on the website, and if your event didn't get on there, please let us know, and we can get it added on the list. I did reschedule my coffee with Kathy, so if you thought it was last Saturday and you missed it, well, you didn't. I had an event to attend with my husband at the West Valley Fire District, so it has been rescheduled for this Saturday. Take a break from your shopping for a little bit, and then go back out to our small businesses. I'll be at McNary Restaurant on the 25th from 10 to noon, so come on out, let's have some coffee and conversation, and then let's support our businesses. Next week, at the, end of the week, I will be at the League of Oregon Cities Board of Directors, where we will begin work with our new Executive Director, Mike Cully. And then on the 2nd, I hope you all have on your calendar, I think most of you are able to come to Council Night at the Food Barrel over at Gubser Miracle of Christmas, so that's from 6 to 8. And then look on the map on where the, I think the collection point is the same place, 6 to 8 on December 2nd. So those of you who can make it, it's always a lot of fun, and that's also Snowball Night, so later in the evening, if you're on the second shift there, you can see all these kids coming by in all their beautiful tuxes and gowns, taking the lights as part of their evening for a snowball. And then I just want to give a shout out to our Kaiser Police, who have worked very closely with neighbors of the Country Glen neighborhood, who woke up to a very disturbing site a few days ago, with threats that were painted on homes and fences against students at McKay High School. And I wrote on my Facebook page, and I want to reiterate, as we all are in full agreement, that there is never any time that any threat to anyone is acceptable in our community. We will not tolerate it. We will work hard to make sure that our students, our neighbors are safe and feel secure, and I want to give a big shout out to our police, working in conjunction with Marion County sheriffs, with the school district, and the city of Salem, to ensure that our students are kept safe, and that they know they are well taken care of. So thank you to Deputy Chief Coons and everyone who was involved with that, and for following up the next day, as people are rightfully so concerned that there are people out there who have ill intention, but we will not tolerate that. This community welcomes all, all of our neighbors are part of our community, and that's just the way we, we roll here. So, thank you, Deputy Chief, and please pass on our thanks to everyone in the department. And please keep us up to date as things unfold, so we'll know what's going on there. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to the city manager for other business. Oh, I'm sorry. I think you've got some pretty exciting news to share. Our youth counselor, Hernandez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have some exciting news. I have been invited to, to background, I applied to the Gates Scholarship. It's one of the most competitive scholarships in the country. For those who don't know, basically, it's changed since, it used to be the Gates Millennial Scholarship, Bill and Melinda Gates donated a billion dollars grant to this program to help underrepresented students be able to afford college. So it basically pays, it's like a full ride for undergraduates. So I applied to that, and I was invited to the second phase. So it cuts from about 50,000, whoever applies across the country, to just 2,000 people. So I'll read this excerpt from the email that I got. "As a semifinalist, you are one of 2,000 applicants from across the country who have exhibited exceptional potential to succeed in college and beyond. As such, we encourage you to fully research your college options and to apply to schools that are strong academic matches, which may include the most selective institutions in the country." So that was a good piece of news for me. So it's not over yet. I have to write like four essays, get recommendations, and then there's another cut from the 2,000 to say about 1,000, after that, it's an interview process. In the end, there's only 300 finalists, so getting into the 2,000 mark is exciting, though.
That is fantastic. Congratulations.
Thank you. McNary High School is on Thanksgiving break for this entire week, so during that, I'll be spending mine filling out college applications, scholarships-
And writing some essays.
Writing some essays, and studying for the December SAT to get that last chance of bumping up my test scores, making me more competitive for- bumping up my test scores, making me more competitive for colleges and whatnot. Future Business Leaders of America is trying to reach out and get itself known in the community, so we will be having a float during the Holiday Lights Parade, so that's exciting. And we're seeking partnerships with local businesses to secure internships and job shadows for our interested students to start building towards their future career goals.
Fantastic.
I'm a chair member for the Community Outreach Committee for National Honor Society at McNary High School, so we're looking for opportunities for us, for McNary students to serve our community and any volunteering opportunities possible, so you can reach out to me, let me know. And there's also the Adult Adopt a Celt program at McNary High School, and it's an opportunity for people to give to families who can't afford to provide gifts and whatnot for the holidays for their kids, so it's a really good opportunity to, for us to pitch in and support a family in our community. So you can see the Counseling Office for more information on that, and that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and congratulations, we are so excited for you, very proud of you.
Thank you.
At this time I'd like to turn it over to the City Manager for other business, this time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members or staff an opportunity to bring newer old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Tracy is signaling nothing.
I have nothing.
Tim.
Nothing here.
Deputy Chief Officer Coons.
Yeah, thank you Chris, Madam Mayor, city counselors, I had nothing tonight except for to say thank you for your thank yous, I do take those back to the members of the police department and share your appreciation for them, and so, thank you very much.
Mr. Lark.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Brown.
Actually, a couple of things, it centers around the date that we have for the consultants doing the interviews, and so we're basically going to be starting either at 11 o'clock and going through till 6:45, or starting at 12 and going through, we want to make sure that we are reaching out to our Hispanic community, and so one of the groups is going to be targeted to our Hispanic members of our community, so, and we're working on the details with Counselor Herrera there. And I need to get with the Chamber, one of the groups is specifically oriented to our business community, and so I need, I need to get with you about some names. The time, the difficulty is so that we have a total of, I think, nine groups, and so we have to coordinate them on a very tight timeframe, we're allotting 45 minutes, the intent is they're very small groups, they're intended to have a very personal discussion, it's focused on setting the context in our community for what the community attitude is about the, about the urban growth boundary issues, and what kind of impacts, what is our tolerance for changes to our community by changing that, and so it's all focused on that, that specific topic. And it's not going to be so much an interview as it is a discussion, and our consultants are going to be leading that discussion. So, though it's very discreet and it's only 45 minutes, it's really very important to set that context for our consultants. So Danielle, if I can get with you tomorrow, that would be good, or somebody, you just tell me who, I don't care.
I was on Thursday, you know.
Well, and perhaps I could work with Jonathan on it?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
I'm sure he's watching right now, appreciating this.
I'll tell him you said so.
Okay.
All right.
On the record now.
So, and Kim, I might talk with you a little bit, because as I'm looking at the numbers, so we're meeting with the neighborhood associations, we're meeting with the builders and developers, we're meeting with the Planning Commission, we have a group from our service organizations, the Rotary members there, we have, you as council members are small groups, because I can't have more than three of you in a room at one time, so, and that's why I'm trying to shuffle you guys around that, so, there's actually, two of you will be meeting with the neighborhood associations, and then we'll have two other times where you'll be talking with the consultants one-on-one. Then we have a group that's citizens at large, and remember, these groups are just from four to six people, so they're very, it's intended that the consultants want to hear from the individuals, it's not a large group that some people are going to be talking a lot and some people are just going to be listening, everybody's going to be participating in this directly. So, that is enough to chew on for now.
That's quite enough from you. Mr. Johnson.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. I have no written communications tonight, agenda input, December 4th, 2017, 7:00 PM, will be city council in regular session, December 11th, we have work session at 5:45, we know, we don't have a topic at this time, we'll leave it on the record for right now, if something comes up between now and then, but I'm not anticipating anything at this time, I know there are some topics we want to take on probably early in the year, but middle of December is often not a good time for that. December 18th, we will again meet in regular session at 7:00 PM. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Counselor Herrera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I forgot to mention, all our sports teams do a great job, our soccer team, I just want to acknowledge McNary's football team, Coach Abenan did a great job with the group this year, they won their first round against Grants Pass, and then they had to go face Wesley, number third ranked, and that was not very pretty, but you know what, they were young and they're going to be just fine, but I wanted to just congratulate them on a great season, and the kids are really enthused for next year, so, thank you for that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Everybody have a happy Thanksgiving. Oh, Counselor Ryan?
Sorry, thank you, Madam Mayor, real quick, I wanted to mention that Small Business Saturday, we talked about, I know briefly, but McNary Golf Course, who is such a great member of our community in giving back, is donating a portion of their gift certificates to CASA, which is our court-appointed special advocate program, and you know, they're here in Kaiser, so you're supporting a local nonprofit and profit and supporting McNary if you can purchase a gift certificate from them, you can get them from them or even from me, so thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much. Happy Thanksgiving, we are adjourned, it is 8:20.